Okay, we have a number of individuals coming in, so we're just going to give you two minutes to settle down, find some seats, so that we can begin. Gentlemen, let me first of all begin by recognizing the Honorable Roosevelt Skerritt, Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of Dominica. We also have at the head table Honorable Cozier Frederick, Minister for Environment and Kalinago Affairs, Honorable Fidel Grant, Minister for Public Works and the Digital Economy, other honorable members of Cabinet and Parliament, residents of the Kalinago Territory and surrounding communities, senior government officials who are here with us tonight, the media, those of you who are here in person, but I also want to recognize all of those who are listening and viewing live as these proceedings, town hall proceedings, are being carried live. This evening, the Government of Dominica embarks on the second in a new series of town hall meetings to be held across Dominica with the objective of sharing updates on ongoing development across the country and in the various communities, also listening to your feedback on various issues of community and national concern and collaborating with you on shaping our future. This evening, we will hear from the Honorable Fidel Grant, who is the Minister for Public Works. We will also hear, of course, from Honorable Cozier Frederick, who is the Minister for Kalinago Affairs and your parliamentary representative. And of course, we will be addressed by the Honorable Prime Minister as well this evening. We will also allow time for an open forum where we hope to hear from you, as I said, on various matters of community and national interest. This evening's program is scheduled to run from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and we are really looking forward to the engagement with you. At this time to begin this proceedings, we'd like to welcome Mr. Elvis Francis as we stand for prayer. Mr. Francis?
Brothers and sisters, let us place ourselves before the Lord, Almighty and ever living God, we give you thanks and praise for yet another day. We give you thanks and praise, Lord, that you could have brought us here together as a family, a family with plans, plans to develop our country, our community, the Kalinago Territory. Father, we give you thanks for this government, a government that is working, and Lord, into your hands we place this government. And we ask you, Lord, to give them the directive, give them the foresight, give them, Lord, the knowledge and understanding, love and compassion, that they will be able to share with the people that they lead and will lead the people with honesty and righteousness. Lord God, may your blessings be upon our leader, the political leader of this government, the Honorable Prime Minister, Dr. Roosevelt Skerritt. Lord, and all the other ministers of government who are working together with him, Lord, may you bind them together, Jesus, that he will continue to work for the betterment of this country and that our country will move from where it is. Lord, in your hands we command, Lord Jesus, this gathering. And we ask for your blessings upon each and every one of us as we discuss matters for the development of our country. In Jesus' precious name we pray, amen.
Amen, and thank you very much, Mr. Francis, for this prayer which has set the tone for our meeting this evening. At this time to officially welcome you to the Kalinago Territory and to this town hall meeting this evening, I would like to invite Honorable Cozier Frederick, Minister for Environment, Rural Modernization, Kalinago Upliftment and Constituency Empowerment, and the Parliamentary Representative for the Kalinago Territory, Honorable Frederick. Please welcome.
Thank you very much, Kapsik. Pleasant evening to everyone here tonight. We hope that we'll have a wonderful conversation. I really want to welcome you into this wonderful space. And the thank you for attending. I see folks all the way from Wakama to Paguah, and I see people from Marigot all the way to St. Joseph. So that's exciting. As introduced, I'm the Minister for the Environment and Kalinago Upliftment, but also the parlay of the Saliba constituency, which for... Which includes, which the Saliba constituency includes the Kalinago Territory and Atkinson. And sometimes we refer to it as Kalinago constituency, but it's actually the Saliba constituency, and we want to make this clear. We are here this evening because we need to have an honest conversation about what we've been doing in our space and what we've been doing within the entire country. And the definition of an honest conversation is looking at some of the positive and also some of the negative things that needs to be dealt with. As the parliamentary representative, I'm happy to serve a second term within the Kalinago space and the Atkinson and Tuzel area. An area, I think, which has, clearly you could see, has developed immensely over the last 20 years. I mean, you drove through this space. Some of you came from, through the Casobus area, you drove through this space. And some of you came over the back road in the, in the, what was a guti track before the Dominican Labour Party. And some of you came from the northern area, through the Atkinson community. And when you came in, I'm sure you would have seen something different. So I welcome you to that space because it's an important one that has developed immensely. If you look carefully, if you look candidly, you will see the massive development in housing. As you enter through the, through the margin area, you see three sets of houses. The EU homes are there, the houses on the HRP are there, and also the pre-congo homes are also there. Very, very present, very, very visible. But more importantly though, during the course of the last 20 years, we have been able to develop a lot of human capacity in our space. So when I welcome you into that space, you are welcome as brothers and sisters because some of you would have interacted with some of the professionals from our space. The medical doctors, teachers, the principals, the PSCs, heads of departments. And you realize that development not only speaks to what we see as infrastructure, but what we do as people. And I just say, as the duly elected Member of Parliament for the Saliba constituency, I have seen development in both lenses, through development of people, but also through human capacity, and also infrastructure. So friends, I welcome you into that space because it is a space that has been very dear to me personally as a Kalinago brave, a warrior, someone who grew up in Saliba, in Fonseca, Maui, and who faced the rigors of the 2019 elections. We know this story. Some of you know the backstory of how I got into this thing and just to continue where I started, just as a normal little Kalinago boy within our space. And so the conversation today, we will speak to those things. There are some major achievements that we have had in this space for ourselves. And of course, with the help of the government, we've been able to have this wonderful school. We are able to have many housing schemes across that space. And all of this was totally destroyed, in some sense, when Hurricane Mary hit us. So we had to reconfigure our community. And hence, using what was us, what was our definition, resilience. Because sometimes we forget that, and we complain sometimes in the Saliba constituency, and we behave soft and we are touchy and sensitive, forgetting that we are serious warriors. We have stood hundreds of years of colonisation. We fought people, we survived. And sometimes we get soft and we, we, we... Sometimes we raise our voice and we want to cry and... I don't understand this because that is not who I am, that's not how I knew my brothers and sisters in the Kalinago space to be. So I, those of you from outside, I want to welcome you to that space because more than ever in the history of our community, we see a resurgence of that spirit. That, yes, we have suffered great injustices throughout the course of our history. Yes, we have many things we have to do better. We have to look at our schools, how do our school system? How do we, how do we treat with culture within our space? And all of this is being done, but sometimes I get the feeling that we are not welcoming to some of those ideas ourselves that help to make us better. And so friends, I am happy that we're here this evening. Some of you would have been at home doing a little Netflix after the hard day of work, watching a little movie, scrolling through your TikTok or making your TikToks from what I realize so far these days. But you are here with us tonight, and so I am really excited to be here and excited to hear what you have to say. Because I know for a fact that you are going to be candid, you're going to be straightforward, you're going to ask the good questions, the tough questions. And I may have to scratch my head sometimes because sometimes those questions need to be answered, even if they are tough questions. It is important for us to have this meeting because we need, we need, we need the committee participation in government. We need to know what you think as a government. And even if we do come to your homes, or you say we don't come to your homes, even if we do have small executive meetings and little party meetings, and sometimes you don't come, or sometimes you don't show up. And even if you, there are massive PR on the radio and on Facebook and you see what you want to see, but you don't see what you want to see, you hear what you want to hear. Even if all that exists, we still, you see, your voice is important in that conversation because we have to be part of our process. And again, I welcome those of you from outside who are here, and my colleagues are ministers and parliamentarians, and especially Prime Minister who come from Itasi, which is one of the first serious Kalinago settlements on New Zealand, into our space because I think you as colleagues have contributed a lot in my personal journey. And I want to celebrate the work done by my predecessors. Honorable Daru Castias is here, Kelly Granau, Ashton Granau is also here. Even going back further, good comrade Leonce Lawrence Daru, which Prime Minister, after this wonderful road is completed, we should name after him. A strong warrior who has done a lot for the community. So in every sense of the word, friends, brothers... So in every sense of the way, friends, brothers, sisters, you are here to participate in an important conversation because your voice, as I said before, is needed in that development process. When we realize in developing countries, in countries across the region, sometimes the voice of the local communities are not part of the development process. I just say, while we talk about all of the projects we have had in the past, there are few more to come. And you sent in Badaka on Friday, so I invite all of you to come to Badaka on Friday where we do our serious groundbreaking ceremony for our center. A place that has grown over the years from a little kaipai to a serious community center, although there is some protestation against that movement. Sad to see. So that, so we have a candid conversation. That's why I'm saying this. Because this goes around in the community that it may not be the best place to do something like that. It's really sad. But I just say, that is happening. Also, we are continuing to build new homes as we speak. We are contributing with our students in China, who's in Cuba, in various countries, honing their skills to become good professionals. And so that's happened, and that's futuristic. And I just say, I welcome you to that community where there will be much more or there will be many more professionals in the public service coming from our space. And that the nature island is the Kalinago brand because it's a unique space. And of course, we have to do more. And of course, I suspect some of you want to see me more. Of course, they want to see me more. I wish I had plenty more time. I wish there was a twelve-day week, but there's only a seven-day week. And I'm hoping that I can join you in your living rooms and other parts of the homes to have a conversation because it's important. And I just say, I welcome you, the local community, because we see people across the line here. We have past Kalinago chiefs here as well, cultural leaders are here. We have people there who are seriously, Prime Minister, and my colleagues, who have serious concerns over development processes. And they want to lend their voice to the process. I'm not saying that we have not done that before, but it's a continuous process. And you are in a town hall and the idea of a town hall people is that if you are able to connect with people at various levels, on a personal level, you have a chance to have a voice now. And so we're happy to have this Prime Minister in our community, to have the Cabinet Ministers here. And this is a serious government intervention. If you look at, if those of you who are on the Facebook and who Google stuff, you realize that this is not a common occurrence in countries across the world. And I'm happy to have almost all of my colleagues here who have had a long, hard day of work, you know. Some of the fellows are red, they're tired. Some fellows come in slippers because they're boiteen and they can't put a shoe, but they're here with you. And I just say, those of you who are here also, you have had a long day. And so let's have this good conversation. Let us ensure that we are respectful. Let us be candid, let's be fair, let's be honest. And let us put everything on the table because the Salibier constituency will only get better if we continue to work as a people, if we continue to work as solid people. Because there's an old saying that the weakest link is the chain's thing. We are better together if we come together as a big tushkoko thing rather than one tushkoko. So there's all of those wonderful sayings. So we are much better working together. And if you keep pulling here and it is, there's no way, brothers and sisters, friends, colleagues, people from here in the Kalinago space, in Atkinson and Drizil, and from outside, that we can ever build a powerful community. We have to go ourselves seriously. So again, I just want to welcome all of you here this evening and hope we have a good time, ask the questions. I will not be answering questions outside there after tonight because I hope you're going to ask me all the questions tonight because I had a long day as well and I wanted to just go and just put my foot up and hope I have the energy to come back tomorrow to serve you and serve you much better than I would have done in the last couple of years. So brothers, sisters, thank you for being here and welcome, welcome to the Kalinago space.
Thank you very much, Honorable Frederick, for that overview of ongoing developments in the Salibier constituency and in the Kalinago territory. And also thank you for your warm welcome, I have to say, to the Kalinago space as Honorable Frederick says. Now, you spoke about the road, the drive coming here. I would have, PSN would have come here yesterday. We took the horseback ridge yesterday and today we drove through Cassie Bruce and on both ends. Yes, Minister, it's a nice road, nice, yes. But to speak to you a bit more on ongoing developments with this particular project and other projects, I would like to invite Honorable Fidel Grant, the Minister for Public Works, Public Utilities and the Digital Economy.
Thank you, Kapsak. Let me first recognize the presence of the Honorable Roosevelt Skerritt, Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of Dominica. Let me also recognize the presence of the Parliamentary Representative, Honorable Frederick, other Cabinet Ministers, Permanent Secretaries, Financial Secretaries, other senior government officials, people of the Kalinago Territory, a warm good evening. This evening, I'm going to be brief, but if I have to go through all the things that the Ministry of Public Works will be doing, we'll be spending the night just on public works. But this evening, I'm going to focus on three main areas that are of benefit to the people within the Kalinago space, as the Parlay likes to say. Firstly, we are going to look at the existing East Coast Road, what we call Lot Two. Lot Two is twenty kilometers in length and that is from Cassie Bruce to Harton Garden. So within that lot, originally, we had thirty-eight culverts and this was increased to ninety-two. And we had originally eight retaining walls. This increased to thirty-five. We originally had twenty kilometers of slipper drains. This was changed to twenty-two kilometers of slipper and box drains. And the reason for that is we recognized following the trough of November twenty-twenty-two that we needed to make some changes. So you would have seen that in December last year, we had gone to Parliament for an additional loan of a hundred million. So just to inform you that the Cassie Bruce to Harton Garden leg of this project is costing the government in excess of a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars. And some persons have queried, why are we spending this amount of money on just a road? So there are a number of benefits to a road. Most of you would have realized that coming here this evening from Tong, you have a quicker ride, it's much more comfortable. But most importantly, you are going to be saving in terms of the maintenance, the wear and tear on your vehicle. I see Teacher Varma is there. She had many complaints of her vehicle. That should be resolved now, Miss. But it's not just, it's not just the benefits, it's not just the benefits that only the persons within the Kalinago space would reap. It extends beyond that. So most of you cannot testify to the fact that the Kalinago Territory is a major tourist attraction. And you would have seen an increase in the number of visitors during this cruise ship season coming to the Kalinago Territory because of the improved access that the visitor have. So you'll find now a number of coaster buses are having a smoother ride and are putting the Kalinago Territory as part of their itinerary for tours. Now, what does this mean for the Kalinago people? It now gives you the opportunity to improve on your craft, your fresh produce vendors, your farmers, you're going to see increased business. So the road, yes, it's a thirty-eight million dollar investment, but it's an investment in you, the Kalinago people, and Dominica by extension, that for many decades to come, you're going to reap that benefit of that investment. So I urge the Kalinago people that from now, if you have not started, to have a discussion, the Ministry of Tourism, the Ministry of Small Business, on how you can improve. Because very often, we say that we build a road and the road is resilient, but it's not just a road. It's for what some of us would like to call, it's an economic highway to development. And I think that if we take advantage of it, the thirty-eight million dollars would be a drop in the bucket for the returns that the Kalinago people will be seeing. For those of us who travel to school and work, it's going to be a much quicker and shorter ride. So I think that the students, the teachers and the persons who work in Tong are thankful for that. I'm not too sure what the record is for Minister Frederick, but I clock in forty-five minutes, Rosa to Kalinago. Okay, so that is it for the road. For most of you, there is ongoing. One of the major components of this project would be the Pegoa Bridge. We made some significant changes and improvements to that bridge. So the bridge is two-lane and we expanded the span of that bridge. And we had to do some acquisition. This was done recently. So we changed the location so that bridge increased from three point five to just over eight million dollars. And those are, all these are investments in terms of access for you, the Kalinago people, and Dominica by extension. So the second area that I would like to touch on this evening is Duwasko. And first off, I would like to apologize for the inconvenience that the Kalinago Territory has suffered over the last few months, particularly the residents of Badaka. We experienced some difficulties in the Kapo Hall area. So from time to time, you are, you do not have water. And I would like to apologize on behalf of Duwasko, as the Minister responsible for Duwasko, for the shortages that you experienced. Outside of this shortage, we have some positive news to Duwasko. We have invested six point five million dollars in redoing all the lines within the Kalinago Territory. So you would have seen while the roadwork is going on that we would have been doing some replacement of lines. And this is through a loan from the DSS, Dominica Social Security, six point five million dollars. So you would have experienced shortages over the last couple of years and this was due to four major leaks that we had across the Kalinago Territory that we constantly had to repair. So your water supply would be consistent within a few months. So again, I would like to thank you for your understanding and your patience in that matter. The third area that I would like to touch on this evening would be the digital economy. We have recently made grants available to several persons within the Kalinago Territory. We have visited some of these persons recently and we are pleased that they have purchased their computers. Some of them have done their Facebook pages. They have done websites. And they have improved their digital presence in terms of their business. And that is what the digital economy is all about, creating avenues using technology where residents can earn money. Another significant area in the digital economy is training. We have a number of training programs ongoing and we will be coming in to the Kalinago Territory soon. We had a meeting this morning with the staff and I have asked the staff to go out. The manner in which sometimes we communicate needs to be improved. So the staff will be visiting the Kalinago Territory and having discussions with the school, the village councils. We'll be visiting the blocks and having a heart-to-heart with the young people as to the certifications that are available for the young people. Within the Kalinago Territory, one of the government's senior, if not only developer, Mr. Miguel Oguis, and I'm not too sure if he's here this evening, sir. So he's from the Kalinago Territory and he's one of the government's senior developer. And that just goes to show the amount of opportunities that are available within the digital economy. Mr. Oguis will be attending a developer's workshop in Geneva, Switzerland. Congratulations, sir. But Mr. Oguis is one of many students that can come out of the Kalinago Territory in terms of digital technology. So I would like to urge the parents who are here and the young people that are here, let us have a discussion as to how we can assist you. The training programs are free and they are certification attached to those programs and they are recognized globally. In closing, I would like to express a heartfelt thanks to the Kalinago people for their patience and understanding during the construction of the East Coast Road. We understand there were a number of challenges. However, you have been patient, you have been understanding and you have been tolerant. I believe that the headache which you would have suffered would have been met with a nice relief or a nice painkiller in terms of the ride that you now, you now experience. So again, I would like to thank you for your understanding. Thank you for your patience. We had an excellent relationship. The Parlay was always on our case in terms of ensuring that the dosses manage and that the pipes are repaired. We know Duwasko is doing the best that they can. But overall, the response that we receive from the Kalinago Territory, I must say a heartfelt thank you to the people for the way that they behaved during this time. And we do appreciate your understanding. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Grant, for this brief but very focused overview on some of the key projects which have had and will have an impact on the Kalinago Territory and the Salibier constituency as a whole. I want to also recognize Mr. Oguis because as Cabinet Secretary, I have worked and collaborated with him on a number of applications for the Government of Dominica. So just to tell you, when you, when we roll out our online Gazette, official Gazette, just know that Mr. Miguel Oguis is the developer behind the Gazette website. So thank you very much, Mr. Oguis. Very skilled and very talented young man. Thank you. At this time, of course, leading the charge on all of these development projects is the Honorable Prime Minister. And I'm very happy and delighted to welcome Honorable Roosevelt Skerritt, the Prime Minister, to speak to us this evening.
Thank you very much. Let me recognize my colleague, the Parlay, Honorable Frederick, the Minister for Public Works, Honorable Grant, my Cabinet colleagues present, the Kalinago Chief, all of the residents of the Salibier constituency. I am so happy to be here this evening. This is part of our outreach in engaging communities. You hearing from us, we hearing from you because that's what's going to bring progress to yourselves, to the community and to the country where we can, we can work together. It's not about government doing for you, but it's about you working with the government to make things better for you. And so I think this is the spirit in which we engage in ourselves here at this town hall meeting. And I'm so happy for so many of you who have decided to attend. It tells me that you're interested in your development, you're interested in development of the Salibier constituency. And very importantly, you're interested in development of Dominica. This is our country. This is where the majority of us will call home until we die. And the question is, what do we want for our community? And the question is, what are we going to do? What is going to be our contribution towards achieving those things? It's easy for us to say, well, we want this and we want that and this is what we should do, this is how we should do it. But it's also important for us to see, how do I play my role in achieving this? There is no question at all. There is no question at all that this government has invested heavily in this part of Dominica. And no time in our history, because history is important, lest we forget. Because sometimes we have things today in Dominica and it appears that we take it for granted, believing that it was always there. It wasn't always there. If you look at education, for example, when I was at the college, there were nobody from this part of Dominica at the college. None. Not as students and not as lecturers. Today, we have both because of the progressive policies and programs of this government, this party. We have revolutionized access to education in this country. We moved from, in two thousand and, two thousand, it came into forty-four percent of primary school students having access to high school and in two thousand and five to one hundred percent. Not by just writing down paper and saying, well, let's go and do it. No, by investing, investing in classroom spaces, investing in more teachers, investing in more resources. That's how we achieved it. That's how we achieved it. But we were also able to achieve this because this party and this government understands how important education is to a country. And this is why we did not leave any stone unturned by investing in this. Then we go to college. When we came in two thousand, only seven percent of all secondary school graduates in Dominica had access to the college. Seven out of a hundred, that is, which means ninety-three out of a hundred students who graduated from high school in Dominica before two thousand did not have any access to high school, to college, sorry. Today, there is a space at the college for everyone who meets the basic requirement to enter the college. But there is one thing to create access. Because you can have a jam, big jam, but if you don't have money to go in, you can have access to it. So the jam is there, but how do we get in? And so in this school, we didn't only create the spaces, we didn't only provide the teachers and the material resources, we also provided the students and their parents with the means of taking advantage of the of the access. The means, textbooks, uniform, free transportation, and in the college case, no tuition. So parents don't have to worry. Back in days when many of you, the few of you who still go to high school, used to run from this bus driver when he see him at church or by the bar because we owing him money and we know he's gonna ask us for money and he tells the parent, the children, tell the mother, if she doesn't give me money tomorrow, I'll make you go up on the bus. And many children dropped out of school because of that, bright children, across Dominica. And sometimes people speak as if, well, we always at the state college, we always at university, access secondary education. And I'm not even gonna talk about university education. Anybody, well, I would say anybody, but ninety-nine percent of people in this part of Dominica who access university, the Dominical Labour Party had a part to play in this. One way, even before we became the government, in the eighties and the nineties, when Rosie would go out and get scholarships from progressive governments in Europe, and even when we were promoting as a party scholarships to Cuba, the country was not recognizing this scholarship graduates. They couldn't practice, they couldn't teach, they couldn't dress our shoes. The plans that they drew, they couldn't send to planning. Am I hearing us? I feel like I'm a preacher man tonight. Preaching the gospel, the gospel. And so I'm just saying these things to poke our consciousness, to judge our consciousness. Then we come to housing. Nobody in here, and I see former Kalinago chiefs here and former par reps here and people who are much older than me and who are who are historians in their own rights, cannot speak to any government spending money here in this part of Dominica on housing. No, I come from the Vegas constituency. We have always been in government. This is the only constituency in Dominica that has never been opposition, both pre and post-independence. That is why Labour will always stay in government because because always been, I'm speaking from our historical empirical standpoint. And I can tell you, I'm a student of history. There is not no home that any government fixed in that constituency, farmer to build in that constituency until we became the government. And the first time a government would have come here in the Saliba constituency to build homes was myself and Kelly Grano in two thousand and two. When I came there myself, I wrote a project and got money from the French. And I got ten homes for the Kalinago Territory. I will build ten homes for ten families. I remember my my dear friend, may he rest in peace, Marvin, Marvinson, right? Close to Big Chief Home, right? Just adjacent, I believe, the Gollit River. I was there building with them in two thousand and two. I wasn't no Prime Minister. It's the first night. And just to give you some little facts, because fact's important. And I want to talk about how much money we spent prior to Hurricane Maria in this part of Dominica. Between two thousand eighteen and twenty twenty-four, we spent thirty-two million, five hundred and one thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents on housing alone. New home construction, general nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. Under the HRP, the House Recovery Program, twelve million, nine hundred thousand dollars. The Sustainable Housing Solutions Housing Initiative, eleven million, four hundred and six thousand, thirty dollars and sixty-four cents. And general home repairs, five million, three hundred and fifty thousand, fifty dollars and seventy-one cents. And the cash register keep punching because we in twenty twenty-five, that's twenty twenty-four. And so we continue to invest in housing and we'll continue so in twenty twenty-five. We will be doing the complete repairs and reconstruction of the, um, the housing schemes. These homes were built back then with concrete and wood. We have mobilized some materials for this. I believe we negotiated with the contractors on the rates and we will see actual work comments on this project and so forth. Then we have persons who were given commitments. We have visited some of those homes and materials have been have been brought into, we started to live about five or so of them. And we will certainly ensure that the commitments that we've given to everybody that the government can fulfill those commitments. Of course, we have to give some special and differential attention to Atkinson. I believe that, I believe sometimes when we speak about the Saliba constituency, we tend to forget that there is Atkinson and Trisil part of it. And we're not gonna make any, we we take, we accept that responsibility. And we accept that oversight. And I can, I'll give you assurance that we will be coming in full force to Atkinson to address this apparent letting down for want or better term in respect to housing for the Atkinson and Trisil communities and so forth. And I'll become myself, along with the Par Rep and the Minister for Housing, to lead that process of ensuring that we can fulfill what appears to be a slight on the part of the government in respect to how we spend money in the Saliba constituency. And sometimes I believe we have to start saying, Kalinago Territory and Atkinson and Trisil, so that we're reminded that you're part of the constituency. Now, the Minister for Public Works spoke to you about the road. It is said that if you want development, you build roads. And I know many of you here and many other parts of Dominica, they keep telling me, Scary, but why you spend all our money on that road? I mean, they couldn't spend so much money by us there in our constituency in that village. We have so many things to do. So the original contract was a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. Went to Parliament to borrow a hundred and three million dollars additional for this road. Because the Minister for Public Works highlighted some of the changes we had to make because of our observations as a result of the trough system in two thousand and twenty-two, November, that the designs were, there were limitations in the designs. And to ensure that these roads could be truly resilient in nature and to ensure that the investments that we made prior to the trough would sustain, we had to go back to Parliament and borrow a hundred and three million dollars to this road. And he told you that we increased from thirty-eight culverts in Lot Two to ninety-two culverts. Because when you watched, when you when you watched where the water was coming down, we saw a number of areas that if it did not be the culverts, eventually the road surface would be washed away. So we had to do that investment. And so some people will say, well, Scary, why didn't you spend that money on housing or small business development? Or we should have built a few hotels, some guest houses, invest in some guest houses in the Kalinago Territory, not Atkinson and Trisil and so forth and so forth. But we have to appreciate, my dear brothers and sisters, that development is a process. And we also have to set priorities at any given time. And so the roads are important because that can spur economic opportunities for us in that part of Dominica. The more accessible we are, is more people we expect to come to our communities. Because it is safer to get there, it is easier to get there, it is less costly to get there. And so you're gonna see an increased opportunity for us here, here in this part of Dominica because of the investments in in, um, in the roads. And I myself, I, you know, I agree, it's a lot of money. And that's a challenge we have as a government. Our terrain, the sheer amount of rain we're getting, the landslides and erosion taking place, the many ravines that we have, the many rivers that we have. I mean, only Casperus, coming from Casperus into the Kalinago Territory, all of the bridges that we built, we had to demolish the old ones and build temporary bridges. You can imagine what we could have done with the monies that we spent on temporary bridges. I need two bridges in my constituency now, right now, urgent priority. But we decided to to do it here. Then we talk about the new Senico Primary School. Originally, the plan was just to replace the section of the Senico Primary School that was damaged. And we decided, look, if we're gonna go and build a school now, it is better we just do a complete campus, a complete school to benefit you for the next fifty to a hundred years. And this is why we had to relocate you into this Saliba Primary School to give us the full access to the site, to allow us to build a brand new school for the people of Senico and so forth. It's a major investment. It's a major investment because when I hear some people speak in this country, they give the impression that nothing, absolutely nothing happened in Dominica. And I keep telling people, we have to give God thanks for whatever we're getting. And so it's a significant investment. Then we come to the multipurpose community center. It's a nice looking building, architecturally appealing. But the design itself is costing money. Seven point six, seven million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that's the contract sum. Now, couldn't we have built anything for two million and spend five million on some other things in the community? I agree with you. And when I got a note from the Ministry of Finance, through the Ministry of Environment, through the Ministry of Finance to me, to say that we went to tender because we only had about two, five million dollars for this project. Maybe less than, less than five, but just a five. Went to tender, all the bids came way over the five million dollars. And so we needed to fetch two point five million dollars. I said so while he's signing, I believe it's important to repeat it. Two point five million dollars. And that document sat on my desk for a few weeks. Because I'm saying to myself, with so many things I have to do as Prime Minister and we have to do as a government in this country, we have five million dollars for a resource center. Why do we have to spend seven point seven million dollars on it? So it sat on my desk for about four weeks. Going through my mind and saying, you know, I even said I would come here and to speak to you and tell you, let us, let us remove this and remove that and let us spend the money and some other things. But we had a risk where we had to go back to tender. It would have delayed the project by a significant number of months. And there was a strong guarantee that we will come back with the bids being over the amount we had. And after some time, I decided to approve of allocating the additional two point five million dollars to allow the project to continue. Now you understand the pain that I have when you have to spend all this money on structures in Dominica. But it's an investment that we made here in Bataca, in the locationally top rank in this school, that will benefit us here in this constituency, that will serve as a cultural center, that will serve as a major landmark in the Saliba constituency, that will serve as a hurricane shelter in the event that we are affected by a hurricane. And so there are multiplicity of benefits to you residing here. Now, I am sure in your minds, you could, you were saying, that Scary, I don't really think we need that building. We could have spent that money on something else, I'm sure. And I would agree with any of the suggestions you make in respect to how do we use that money. Then the minister told you of the investment in the water, a loan of six point five million dollars. And I'm a Prime Minister, you know, and up to now, the ministry can't give me one point two million dollars for the paint below water project. Because we've been suffering in my constituency of water for a few years now. Pipe keep bursting every every single day and we go with days. But they are such, they are such wonderful people that they they understand. But the good Lord will provide that one point two million dollars, I believe, in short order. So we can we can fix the problem in my constituency. But I'm also here to tell us that we have to look within ourselves and to look at the opportunities which exist and how we position ourselves to take advantage of the opportunities. Now, in this constituency, we are in a unique position. Unique position in respect to our culture, our tradition, our skills, our talents that you won't find anywhere else in Dominica, to the extent that you will find it here in this part of Dominica. And I think that we have to find a way of harnessing our craft to better take advantage of the opportunities which exist for craft. It is a situation where we have to consolidate the sale of the craft. So we have people who produce it and we consolidate the sale rather than each of us trying to sell what we make. Should we develop that model? I know we've spoken about before, but we've never been able to achieve this. I also believe that stay over visitors is crucial for the economic well-being of the Saliba constituency. We have the sites, people come to visit, but these are day trips, where people to sleep and to wake up in the morning, have breakfast and have dinner, have lunch. I know Aywasi attempted this and of course it was affected by the hurricane. And we need to go back to that plan, to that vision of creating and you're picking up. I stayed there a night at Aywasi and experienced, experienced what we have been talking about. The opportunities here. So when I, when I talk, I'm not talking about the books I read. So when I, when I talk, I'm not talking about books I read or Google things, you know, I'm talking about practical things, I see. So I, 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 I stayed at Aywasi a night, and I woke up, had breakfast, some nice eggs, local eggs, sweet potato, and et cetera, et cetera breakfasts. And so we have to find a way of taking advantage of this special place that we have in the world, in Dominica. And this is a conversation that the Ministry of Tourism and the Ministry of Small Business and the Ministry of Kalanago Affairs need to have, and to the monies that we're making available, we need to prioritize and direct them into creating those kind of sustainable opportunities for the people of the Kalanago Territory and, and Atkinson. I believe tourism, but stay-over tourism. And so you have, and, and my friend, I'm looking for, um, um, I think I saw, yeah, that's my friend, Regina has a, has a plan. She has a little place in the mountain there, she brings guests to her farm, and they, they, they help on the farm, they eat from the farm, and we need to have five, six, seven of those things across the constituency, because tourists more and more are looking for that kind of experience, and they prepared to pay the dollars for it. And so how do we help somebody like Regina improve on her business? And how do we motivate others who have that inclination to get into this? My other message to us here tonight, because I'm here, I don't wanna be long, because I want to hear from you, is that we have to be, we have to promote sustainable living. We cannot have so much fertile soil, and we all want to have breakfast, lunch, and dinner from us, from a mini-mart in the constituency. There's no way we can survive. We have to grow what we eat, and we have to encourage succeeding generations to eat what we grow. I was just, I was in Miami, I came in today, I went to dinner, myself and my wife and so forth, and we, I had, I had cassava, cooked cassava. So why is only foreign going to make the fit? Where, where, where the chips? Where is the boiled cassava to offer the, the tourists? Can't, can't be only foreign. Where the dried chips that we can, we can package, and we can, the government is prepared to help people with investments to get into this. Government can't do it, you have to do it. Government can help, but you have to do it. And this is why, hopefully, very soon, we will be putting about, about two-point-seven million dollars into the Kalanago Developing Fund, and these are the kind of things that we want the fund to be used for. Things, not consumables, but things that can bring a return to you, things that can make you money, things that can employ people, things that can bring the euros and the pounds and the US here into the Saliba constituency, to multiply and to add to what we have, and to create economic activity in this, in this constituency. And so, we are, we are, we are, we are moving on. In this, in this Saliba constituency, we invest in, through the NEP, on a monthly basis, on a monthly basis, two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-four dollars. So every month, the government is putting that money in the hands of people in that constituency, two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-four dollars every month. In, in any currency, that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money, empowering people. Through these programs, we have taken people out of poverty. Through provision of homes, we have taken people out of poverty, because you now have an asset. Obviously, within the Kalanago, because of the, of the land tenancy, the limitations of it, but it's an asset, because you can, you can trade.